That's just news, figured you'd be interested in it. It's just an article about our dresser thing. Yep, we just have an annual and some other stuff. It's just different line items. Rerouffing takes less time to inspect versus a fireplace that takes firewall protection and the other things. Yeah. It's the value of the permit. So that, they said that garage fireplace is gonna cost thirty grand for them to do. Uh, the deer?
The other one though?
Uh, no, let me fill up my water then you can show me in a second here. Jeremy, we're ready when you are.
All right. Call the meeting to order at six PM. Thank you everyone for coming. Uh, first item, approval of the agenda, and we do have the updated agenda if everyone has a copy of that.
Yep.
Okay. The additions, I believe, were two special event permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second. Motion by Bruce, second by Tim, to approve the agenda, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Next item, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting date of October eighth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
By Tim, second by Travis, to approve the minutes from October eighth, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Next item, public input and ideas. All right. Okay. Next item, staff report, oh, so this will be our first time doing the reports up front, we'll see how it goes. Uh, staff reports, so admin.
Okay, thank you, uh, just a few quick ones, uh, I'm, I'm sure Public Works and Police will talk about it, but, uh, for all of the people listening online, which is probably zero, and us, uh, just remember, stop signs changed and the, the one at the top of the hill is a four-way stop now. So, um, we, we've followed the rules, it's been properly flagged, it's within code, so. Hopefully, no issues and it's been kinda fun watching our police try to help residents out to try to find out where to go and hopefully they're not taking too much grief. Uh, secondly, we're gonna have a budget discussion after this, so about five or ten minutes after the closure of this meeting, we'll go into a budget one. And then you did receive two additional, uh, or one additional budget workshop request on the twenty-first of this month. That's gonna be going over our audit results, which are finally done for eighteen, as well as, um, hopefully a ninety-nine percent complete budget that you guys can endorse and we'll get it posted in public. Uh, beyond that, I will say that we have been moving forward with the hiring of our clerk position. We had some interviews last week, it went well, and, um, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have, uh, that clerk position up here for your review. Officially, the, the president is the one that appoints with board review, so that's looking good on our side, other than that, I will defer to staff to take care of the rest of the announcements.
All right, thank you Ben. Police.
Hey Ron.
Yeah. Thought that was a good idea.
So, I start my report as always with just some stats put among, and we can look at some of the stats and just wanna know if there's any questions on that. I mentioned the O W I relating to possession of narcotics lately because I don't have any official statistics nationwide or statewide, but we've certainly seen a uptick on, uptick on that. People arrested for impaired driving have increased and they have either marijuana, usually marijuana on them, as well as in their system, and then with other drugs, we certainly saw it this month. Uh, last Wednesday, Officer Bach and I provided a scam presentation for the O M C, the O M C hospital there. Uh, great turnout, I think they had twenty to twenty-five people there. We learned as much as they did because they're the ones getting these calls and they're being scammed a lot, so. Many trends I talked to them about and tactics, they also filled us in a lot, it was a really good meeting and, um, they had good information, they had a lot of good data points too.
That helps.
Still nothing on the community oriented policing grant, it's frustrating because we keep being told over and over, we'll be soon. Every time we call, there's a two-week deadline, we're told by this date, but still nothing on that, so I'll keep watching for it every day and as a top cycle. So let Ben know what he did.
Yeah.
In October, three of the four schools in Osceola held their Ellis drills, O P D tenzos. A lot of times just to witness, participate, see how it goes, work with the staff, and all three drills went really well, and it's a happy report and Bobby probably should be done this too, but. Every year we go these drills, they have it down more and more to the point where it's, we're doing a really good job with them, so. They have a camera processor room that was replaced, um, and that was a hundred percent thanks to Todd. We knew the camera, uh, had, had broke through the water damage, they got some bits for the camera replacement, but Todd actually worked with the general contractor and subcontractors to make sure that they have payment based on reimbursements, and he put a lot of time into that to make sure the village was, was foothold, so. I thank Todd for his efforts and help on that, along with everything else that he does, so that helped a lot. Uh, next Tuesday evening, I'll be attending the community emergency preparedness, uh, meeting at O M C. This is something that they actually have to get the grant for, but it's, we've got a couple meetings now and it's been about topics that are actually good discussion. Uh, the next one we talked about, nevermind discussing states only, but, you know, we don't have a storm shelter in the community anymore. We don't have a cooling shelter, we don't have a heating shelter, um, since we lost the old O M C building, it was our, our last one. Our unofficial emergency one, I guess, that hasn't even designated that, might be the squad garage. You know, in the event of a tornado coming, if they had nowhere else to go, that would be a place to keep them, but we also have staff there, so if it's in the evening, that might be. So this meeting is just to start getting the ball rolling and see what are some of the things we can do, what grant opportunities are available, because a lot of people who are now working grants will be, uh, at this meeting as well. And just kick some ideas around, so hopefully in the next six months or a year, we can start to vote some ideas before you're.
Yeah, who's part of that, just curious?
Uh, it's a lot of stakeholders, there's people at the county level, there's some state people involved that come to the meeting, so Osceola coordinates it, it's outside invitations, and I think communication will extend it to any of you as well. That's why I put it in here, they want decision makers to attend at input and kind of be in the know, so if we make it, you're certainly welcome to, I understand. Um, on Monday, yesterday, the Boy Scout crew came into the police department, officers, uh, Dan Clement and Tim Gata were there and gave a tour, uh, did some fingerprinting, and I understand them pretty well.
It was awesome.
Now, both the officers did a really, really nice job.
That's good to hear, yeah, they enjoyed it, I, I told them to keep it around an hour, and Dan told me it went over an hour, it probably could've went two hours, but. Tried to shorten the range a little bit, so.
I was asking a lot of questions.
And in closing, our community coffee events in full swing again, the last two Fridays of every month, eight-thirty to ten. This month on the twenty-second, we have a special edition, Todd and, and the Public Works will be there for, you know, coffee with the cloud driver as well, so. Anybody in the public's welcome to attend, uh, talk to Todd, this is something Todd asked if he could piggyback on, answer any questions people might have, I think it's a great idea, so. We're gonna put that on, on our social media page as we get closer and let people know about it, so.
So, back to the emergency preparedness, Tuesday night, what time?
Uh, probably four to, I better check the time, I think it's four to five thirty.
Will you also make sure that the podium mic is on? I'm not sure if it is.
It is now.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, four o'clock.
Four o'clock, okay, four to five thirty then.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, any questions though? All right, thank you. All right, Public Works.
Evening everybody.
Hey Todd.
Hey Todd.
So October going into November, uh, we're just gearing up, gearing up for snow removal. Obviously, I'm sure everyone noticed the amount of leaves that we've, uh, removed from town. I think, uh, we've committed over a hundred hours as stated in the report, uh, to the remove, removal efforts with the, with the street sweeper alone. So, um, that doesn't include in the work that we do for like the Village of Dresser and then, and then a little bit of work we do for the town of Osceola, where we, uh, we kinda barter services. So, it's nice that we're able to do that kinda stuff for them and then they can provide and borrow us equipment that we don't have. Uh, the curbside leaf bag removal, that started October fifteenth, I think we've co- collected probably somewhere around fifty, a hundred bags plus, this is one of the largest leaf piles, um, that we've had over the last probably three, four, five years, so, uh, we're turning it into dirt and, uh, we're working with a local contractor so that we have that dirt sifted, it's free for the residents down and available at the shop, and then we also use it for all of our major projects. We worked with that local contractor to sift all that dirt and he was able to do that for us for free, so. Helps out, it's, black dirt's expensive if anyone's purchased it by the yard. Um, brush chipping was also a success, um, obviously, what's equivalent to five dump, or I'm sorry, four dump truck loads of chip brush. So that's an enormous amount of brush and we were happy to get rid of that and get it all done within that week timeframe. Uh, maintenance continues on our snow, uh, removal equipment, we've got, uh, a number of days in just servicing the trucks alone, getting everything snow ready. And, uh, just an update from even when this report was done, within the last couple of weeks here, we're, we're ready to go, so. When the snow hits, we're ready, or ice, or whatever it might be, we had a visit at the county today and they've been out twice already, um, and have put down a lot of tonnage in salt. Pot-hauling continues, but it's coming to a close with the way that we install it, um, weather dictates that, but we've got twenty-five hundred pounds in this month, just to try and get some of those larger holes wrapped up. Maintenance contracts were also fulfilled by Farner on Belmont Prospect Way in early October. I don't think it was forty-eight hours when we were, you know, we were receiving emails and phone calls already, just, uh, residents thanking us for the road improvements, thanking the village, um, for the work that was done in improving the road, so those are all positive feedback. Uh, grant wise, uh, we did apply for an L R I P grant, local road improvement grant, uh, through the county, state. One of ninety-ten, so hopefully, uh, the grant would cover the, uh, improvement of Simmons Road. Um, so, we have the ability to accept or deny the grant, we have a number of years to work with it, so hopefully, uh, hopefully they'll step up and cover ninety percent, that'd be great. On the park side of things, uh, R C U contributed a large of, saw staff volunteers this month, um, did an amazing job. Fifty yards of mulch was dispersed throughout the, uh, throughout just the playground area alone by hand. Um, so it's ten dump truck loads essentially dispersed, we brought that up about eighteen inches, uh, around the equipment to keep things safe. Uh, forty trees trimmed and, uh, yeah, tw- twenty dump truck loads of brush were hauled out of there, so. It's got a nice, good, clean look now and we have, uh, approximately fifteen dump truck loads of leaves that we're bringing out this week as well, so. Uh, the dock was also removed and secured from the St. Crey River, um, it's a successful season, uh, no damage, so that's secured on the shoreline and, and, uh, be ready to go in again next year. Uh, same thing perks, equipment changeover continues as weather, as, uh, weather and maintenance priorities change, um, we still have a ton of work to do, so the longer the snow can stay away, uh, we can continue to move in that, uh, positive direction and getting some of these other maintenance programs wrapped up. Uh, same thing interior, the warming checks, as time dictates, we get in there and we're, we're finishing that up, so it's coming along nicely. Um, building maintenance wise, winterizing of the rooftop units occurred, uh, in October, you know, just some of the plumbing is removed and, uh, things are looked over. Uh, having a little bit of trouble with one, uh, rooftop unit as the weather changes here from, from fall to winter, but, uh, we're getting the system figured out and the pipes won't freeze, I can assure you that. Uh, same thing, maintenance rooms received some shelving, some more organized maintenance ready appearances, uh, we have some different, uh, working with a new supplier, kind of setting, uh, making things the same across the village in the way of, of all of our paper goods and stuff like that and our, and our holders and, uh, soap dispensers, so. Everything's coming along very nicely. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. Sorry Deb, you got something going?
Green tractor.
We're trying, um, so, I mean, we've had it for sale here in the month of October in, uh, I think five states, North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin. No, I didn't actually receive any hits from that.
Really?
No, unfortunately not.
It's a nice tractor.
It's a beautiful tractor, it's a beautiful tractor, I think it, uh, I'm really trying to work with something, a, a company right now, a local company out of St. Crey Falls, that, uh, rents equipment and I'm hoping that we can, we can work something out here in the way of, uh, and also reaching out to some other larger contractors, even across the river. It's, it's in, it's, it's a, it's a piece of equipment that's in a space that it's, it's just too small for your average farmer.
I was gonna say though, like a homeowner with a large piece of property or?
It would, it would benefit them.
Where do we have it listed?
It was on Craigslist and also, um, uh, Facebook Marketplace, yeah, we have it on there as well and, uh, received a few hits on the Craigslist side of things, piqued some interest in the beginning, but then we got it in like, uh, kind of your farm machinery trader, so we've had it both online, we got a free thirty-day online, it was on four, and then it was also disseminated throughout a magazine, but, uh, we've ceased there only because of the semi-costly commitment to continue to advertise in that paper. Especially, the idea for me was to get it in there for thirty days for free and see if we could generate any interest and unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't get any calls, so. I really didn't seek, uh, or pursue to advertise it there any longer.
Well, if you wanna throw it in my front yard with all the other cars I got for sale right now. Jess, would you be super happy about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I should state the, the one last option we're working with and this is something that the police chief recommended was the estate auction sites that some of the police vehicles have gone to. You can set the reserve, uh, it's kinda the last resort because sometimes you, you don't get what you really need or want out of it. It's kinda the last resort if some of these other options don't work for us.
It works. Um, the, uh, the brush pile, the, uh, up by the airport, I know we talked a little bit about it, but I just kinda wanted to, you know, update the rest of the board on this, is that, there's, you know, something, uh, there is the piles of the black dirt and the mulch that is down by the sewer plant, which is really nice. The other problem, it's not a problem, but most people will bring their stuff or they take care of it by shredding it. Uh, you know, the village crew does that, but there are people that bring up the brush or they bring up the problem, or do they put their brush in the meantime when they're not picking it up? Uh, they leave it sit out on, on the curbside until, you know, these guys have time to pick it up. There was, uh, a time when people were dropping all their brush off up by the airport, that one spot, the, the gate's not functional right now, so. I noticed, I was up there the other day and some of the people have brought things in there. Now, uh, we kinda added an idea that maybe this is something other than spring and fall cleanup. There'd be maybe one day a month, maybe, that, uh, people could bring their things up there to drop off, just their clean brush. Uh, so, cause there was some citizens that have been talking about this, about what do they do in the meantime with all their stuff? Or if there's some trees that have been cut down, they have the equipment to move it around up there, but it's not really been technically open to the public, uh, for quite some time. Yeah, there were some concerns about security at the airport as far as people coming in, you know, at certain times, random times during the day or night, looking around, dropping their stuff off. You know, it's kinda supposed to be a secure area up there, basically because of, you know, FAA rules and those types of things. And the fence was moved once already because of property dispute type, you know, issue that had passed a couple of years ago. So, anyway, that's just something to keep in mind, um, that this may come up again, but I did talk to Todd about it, he gave me some good information as maybe some ideas that we can think about giving people in town a little bit more opportunity to drop off their brush.
Like a monthly, quarterly, something to drop off?
Well, it's something that, you know, maybe once a month, uh, you know, I, I know it's really difficult, you know, in the wintertime, uh, obviously, you know, there's other stuff going on, but a lot of people, you know, there's a lot of brush. You know, of all the people in town, they're constantly trimming their stuff and, uh, just thinking maybe having somebody down there or at the airport or whatever to kinda manage it a little bit, you know, at least. So, I don't know, it's just something to think about, it might be a little extra service we can add to that.
Would this be something Ben, that we can add to our Public Works meeting next time?
Get used to these mics, uh, we'll definitely add it to the, the D P W.
Yeah, it's just something that we should talk about a little bit more.
Anything else Todd?
I don't know sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for your help on that camera too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good job.
Library?
Okay, yep, Shelby is not here today, um, she's out with, um, kinda under the weather right now. Uh, I'm not gonna go over the day-to-day stats here, you know, continuing to go up in, in quality. Uh, the only one thing I will mention is that, uh, staff is working with the library board to go over the, the library's policies and procedures for everything, such as, uh, what's the, the equipment rental policies, uh, video game policies, uh, noise, um, the big one right now is also donor recognition or donation acceptance, how do we deal with somebody that wants to bring in everything from a snake to, um, cash, so I'm working with the library board to take care of those and Deb's part of that committee also. Other than that, that's, that's all I have, Mr. President.
This month has kinda been a busy month, we had seven runs total, four runs in the village, um, three runs in Farmington Township, breakdown was four, uh, CO alarms, one vehicle fire in Osceola, one tractor fire in Farmington, and one, uh, traffic crash right in town here, so. Uh, a few of the guys, uh, went to a Mavis meeting tonight up in, up in, uh, Balsam Lake, it's what our new thing is for calling in mutual aid. We can call county and they set up cards to just bring in extra, extra fire equipment. Um, October training, uh, we did, uh, vehicle extrication and, uh, vehicle burning. We did eight cars up at the fire hall, in the back of the fire hall, and, uh, we did it in conjunction with dresser, fire, just to, just to learn their techniques, our, and our stuff together. That's where we broke our jaws, our jaws pump is, um, the tank broke on it and it's non-replaceable, so. We're, we went together with Ben and trying to figure out how to somehow get a hold of a different jaws pump, so. Other than that, um, the friends of the fire paid for the new washer and dryer, um, I have to do duct work for it yet for the big clothes dryer and then hook up a drain for the washer yet, but they're really nice, um, once we get them up and going, we can do all our gear and wash it, which is now a, uh, a code, fire code through the fire department that we have to do, so. Um, other than that, you know, we just had our normal meetings and, and runs and stuff, so.
Uh, what, the, uh, M A B A S, what?
Mavis?
Yeah, what?
Mavis is a program that was started about, oh, four or five years ago in St. Crey County and different counties, um, those, it's crossed the river also. It's banned if we go to a fire and let's say it's, let's say one of the buildings in Main Street starts burning, we get there, we can automatically call the county and tell them to pull Mavis card one and two, that automatically brings Somerset and all their equipment, all the dresser, um, or all allied's equipment, and then you can set up many. um, or all allied's equipment. And then you can set up many cards. We're just gonna start out very simple with just the neighborhood, but, you can get bigger where we'll tap into across the river, but county will have a whole display in there, on their board, exactly what to bring in, and it's all done by these, uh, Mavis cards.
So the, all the assets will be on that one particular card, which...
We won't, um, like Donnie or myself, won't have to sit and say, "We need a pumper and a, you know, ladder chuck and blah, blah, blah." All we have to do is say, "We need to exercise Mavis Card One or Two or Three," and the, the equipment will automatically be coming.
Right. Yeah, that's a real good deal.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Alright, building permits. This was an update as well.
Yep, you have your permits in front of you. Uh, the first sheet is monthly, and then what we did is, on the second sheet with a little bit of a black on the top, on the left-hand side's your permit distribution show. So, it shows all the different things that have been permitted, such as forty-five new roofs to twenty new homes. And then on the right-hand side's the cost breakdown. So, at this point in time, we've collected a little over forty-four thousand dollars in permit fees, uh, with the total valuation of those permits at over seven million, so. It's a little bit quieter than previous years, but, but still nothing to, to complain about. The village is growing.
Chamber of Commerce on Main Street?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, you have my report. Um, last month, yeah, we had a five good events. Um, Dr. Tom Haughey and Heather Apps from PY's got the customer service awards. We had two in October. We were catching up a little bit. And, um, we had a really nice, uh, social mixer up at Bending Branches. We had sixty-five good attendants. About sixty-five people from the industrial park came over and had a nice bonfire and connection up there. Our upcoming events, so I hope many of you can, can attend. We have a meat raffle tomorrow night at Tippy's. What, Thursday? Yeah, I'm already ahead of myself. Yeah, Thursday, thanks, Deb. Um, so that is our first, uh, strategy in raising money for new lighting on the trees downtown. So, we're excited about that, so please come, have fun. It'll be good. Uh, and then our next, of course, big event is Dough on the Goer, um, happening on twenty-second and twenty-third, and then our December second annual all-membership meeting is here, and you guys are all invited to that, too, so we'll have board elections, strategic plan, budget review, that sort of stuff that night. And of course, Light Up Osceola is in the works, getting planned. So, uh, the one thing, did you have any questions about that or any comments? Okay. So the one thing I just wanted to ask tonight was, um, we'd like to schedule a special meeting with the village board members and the chamber board and maybe some advisory council members to gather, and we have, you guys have new leadership here. We have new chamber board men- members coming on board. They'll be elected on December second. Just to sit down and open a good conversation and dialogue about understanding each other and understanding where we are, where you are, and, and just have that an open kind of dialogue and discussion. Is that something that we can see happen?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Possibly on a board night, either before or after, depending, and whoever would like to come could be there?
Sure.
We can do a little presentation on what Main Street is and Chamber is, but, yep, I don't know, half hour or an hour, and if we need one more meeting afterwards, you know, one or two meetings to make sure everybody's kind of moving in the same direction and understanding.
December second is your...
Yeah, that's when we should have our new, uh, you know, chamber board members elected. Sometime after that would be great.
I'll schedule out some time, which you're main.
Okay, perfect.
I think it's a, a great idea for the two groups to get together and
Yeah.
talk about these ideas.
So just a little educational session to, um, what the chamber does, what it does.
Perfect, thank you. So then we have a little, um, I'm gonna have, uh, Jen Rosenau come up. So, we began a program. She's the mortgage specialist for RCU. She's also a chamber ambassador. So, we started a new program in, uh, in August, and it was called the Welcome to Osceola Buckets Program. So, um, it's intended ki- and modeled kind of after the old-fashioned welcome wagon. So every time that someone comes and buys a home in Osceola and they have a real estate agent or a mortgage, mortgage agent, they get a little card, and then they can go into RCU and pick up their bucket. So, um, tonight, we actually have somebody here who became a new homeowner, I understand, recently. So, I'm gonna let Jen speak a little bit about why they decided to sponsor the Welcome to Osceola Buckets.
So, the bucket is made up from different businesses around town, so it's welcoming the new people who move into our town and who don't really know the businesses, so they know, they don't have to go to the cities. They can know what's here. They don't have to go up to highway. They can find out what's here and utilize what's here, so it promotes our businesses downtown. And it's welcoming. It's fun for people who move in and they don't know what we have to offer.
Yep, and it gives our members an opportunity to connect with new homeowners as well, so.
Yep, and we have our newer residents to Osceola who we like to give a bucket to.
Oh, Ben.
Well, I didn't buy a house yet.
We hear it's in the works.
They got their ear to the ground.
You're gonna.
You're gonna, yeah, that's what I hear. It's gonna happen.
Okay. Yep, yeah.
I think we should sell that, yeah.
Well, well, thank you so much, Jen and Jermaine.
Fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
That was our point.
And it was worth it.
Perfect.
Alright. On to other business. So, first item under that, approval of QuickTrip development proposal.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see if we get some tech going here. We're gonna have some fun and we're gonna go to record presentation here. I hope everybody will be able to see it right up front here.
What? Oh, there it is.
What's up with this one?
Yeah, we got a purple screen on our side. Uh, I, I can't speak for that one.
Must be one of those theme months, you know, paying for breast cancer.
It is. Thanks, Ben.
Okay. So, QuickTrip today, um, this has been coming a, a long time now, and, uh, you, hell of your packet. You, you've seen the materials. You've seen the presentation. That's up on the screen here. Um, it, it's no different. I'm just gonna screen right through it here, and then I'll, I'll open it up for any discussion, comments, and then a potential action here. So, QuickTrip wants to come in. They, they wanna build at the top of the hill. Uh, they wanna build in the green area that's on the screen here. It's just south of Ridge Road and west of thirty-five. Uh, for those of you who aren't, um, familiar with it, there's a, a senior center that's going in across the street. And then this is, uh, kind of, we'd say nor- directly north of the, the mine and then west of the, the corridor there, or west of the, the airport. Uh, it's on the northern half and a newly completed CSM that you guys did. And then, from a land use perspective, it, it is a future business multifamily area, so in this case, a service station or gas station does fit the bill. From a future location standpoint, it's a pretty standard run-of-the-mill, considered a generation-two QuickTrip, so it's their larger of two QuickTrip options. It has your gas pumps, I believe, up to twenty of them, and then it has your, your diesel fuel on the left side of the lot. And then, of course, a car wash, which is great, and then you'll see some semi parking on the farther west side or, or left side of the screen. Uh, there's a hashed area further to the left that is for future, and then a, a solid area that'll be for future, for current trucking. From a flow standpoint, uh, it should be noted that they, they are asking for two separate driveways. Uh, the two driveways are for primarily, the, I would say, the east ones for vehicles and some semi, and then the west ones just to discharge semis out. Uh, our municipal code does only allow one driveway per use, um, and then additionally, the, the width of the driveways can't exceed thirty feet. The applicants are requesting two driveways to, to show the flow patterns here, and then the wider driveways, because semis have a really difficult time pulling a fifty-three foot trailer out of a thirty-foot driveway. The representative from QuickTrip were at the planning commission meeting. Unfortunately, that gentleman broke his leg about three hours ago, so he's not here today. Yeah, super disappointed in that. He's a, a good guy and he was able to present more than I could. But needless to say, it, it's a nice development. Um, they've, they've thought this out. You will notice that hashed area to the top, those dotted lines, that's a future Ridge Road extension. Uh, it is mapped for a wide enough roadway, and, uh, the site can accommodate that. They are aware that they will have to adjust a couple of parking stalls for semis if that goes through, just to ensure a semi's not gonna back into, uh, Ridge Road in any way. Stormwater is, is managed through a stormwater basin on the bottom-left side. This is one of the points that the airport commission wanted to weigh into because of, uh, waterfall and everything near a runway. Uh, i- in this case, it is north of the runway proper, so it's not in the direct flight line, but it's within their zone two, so that we do have jurisdiction over it. Airport commission and, and staff made a recommendation, it's in your packet, for those conclusions, to, uh, recommend that the basin be drained after forty-eight hours. Uh, this isn't a normally completed thing. DNR really likes to see wet ponds because they, they treat sediment and dirt and pollutants. But in this case, uh, federal regulations for the Air Aviation Administration, Trump, Wisconsin DNR, and they're gonna allow what's called a seeping pond, so it'll drain slowly over forty-eight hours, just to help deter waterfall. So it'll still get some treatment factor and then drain out. It, it's designed just for this development. It's not designed for any future in the area. If QuickTrip were to expand their impervious surface or their building or driveways or something, it would have to be expanded. It's just for this development. Utilities are coming off of Ridge Road and those are all covered. Landscaping is, is pretty standard. It's the standard model of curbside landscaping, if you wanna call it, and then somewhere on the building for some appeal. And then lastly, the, the second, uh, two items here, uh, you'll notice anything within the red hashed area is where light pollution can occur. Uh, we don't want to see excessive lights streaming outside of the property. That's so you, when you sleep at night, you don't see a giant blasting, uh, streetlight blasting on, into your window. In this case, there's only a little bit of bleed over onto Ridge Road, and staff is in support of that because it only enhances our safety of these roadways. We generally have a policy of streetlights only at intersections, not necessarily along the main lines. So that, that's something to consider here. Uh, I, I should take one step back here. Um, with utility portion, the closest hydrants are on Ridge Road. Staff made a recommendation to have a second hydrant put on their site within a hundred and fifty feet of the building. Primary reason for that is, um, best practice for fire department uses, never to draw hoses more than a hundred and fifty feet from source to source. So in this case, from building to pumper and pumper to, to the hydrant. So, uh, QuickTrip is one hundred percent on support of that, and they'll be installing a, a second hydrant, um, with the final location to be determined with staff review during the permitting process. Pretty standard sign. It's gonna be thirty-five feet tall. It is well below the airport zone-two height restriction, so there's no issues there. The airport commission just made a recommendation to have a static sign. That means no flashing LEDs. That means no changing red-blue colors. Uh, state likes to see this also, especially red-blues are prohibited because of a safety standpoint, but any flashing light can deter um, drivers as well as planes and such, so. With that, it's a pretty standard QuickTrip. Looks just like everyone else. It'd be neat to see ours maybe have a, a different color roof than green, but it's pretty cool that we got one nonetheless, so. With that, uh, the modifications that were stated are just to the two, um, code sections, and then our standard conditions that we like to put on there, saying that they have to get all of their approvals and everything. Planning commission and the airport committee did make recommendations to the board for approval, and, um, these conditions cover any of our bases, so unless they meet all of these conditions by time of permit, uh, we wouldn't issue the permit. If, if they need to revise any of these, it would come back, uh, through the process. So with that, I'll, I'll kick it back to the, the, uh, visual here, and we'll open it up for discussion.
Timeline?
Oh, good question. Uh, timeline is intended to pull permits after snow melts and have it up and running by late November. So, yeah, basically a, a four to five month turnaround once permits are pulled.
Was there any word on the, uh, the semi parking as far as trucks? Uh, is this gonna be, uh, I see there's not that many stalls, but trucks that are gonna be, you know, running, reefers running? Uh, is that gonna affect any, anything surrounding there? Uh, noise-type things or...
From a noise standpoint, um, it, I can't say definitively whether or not it would impact. Um, I, I can say that it's, there's no other rel- residential development around it right now.
Right.
The one that's under construction, anybody that moves in would know that that's coming before they move in. Uh, I can't guarantee sound will carry forever. Additionally, it's attached to a state highway, so any sort of nu- noise issues or unsafe loads will be managed through police process or, or county process. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Uh, it's just, I, you know, you see a lot of, uh, truck parking, uh, and they're sleeping in their cabs, and they're leaving the trucks running, keep warm, keep the reefers going, keep the contents cool or under control. And, uh, I was just interested in...
I don't, I don't think that's QuickTrip's model.
There's nothing there that's...
That's not their business model, I don't think.
Okay.
Their application doesn't address, and it didn't come up until just now.
It's like a truck stop, like they're not gonna have showers and stuff.
Right, yeah. I'm just curious, 'cause I see there is some fairly large area for, for trucks, you know, and, uh, yeah, it's not affecting anything right now, but I'm just thinking in the future.
The light on the map here, this light, um, how will that impact much in the new, um, memory care unit that's there? I mean, they know that it's coming, too, the...
They said all of their lighting is down lighting. Nothing should be coming out.
Uh, correct. It's all down lighting. Uh, you'll see on the right-hand side of that blob, there's two little images here. I can actually zoom in a little bit on the screen. So you can see what it looks like there. They're all downlights, and then if you actually look at Ridge Road itself, right up in this area, it, it only infringes on the road about two or three feet. So it isn't in, it, it isn't expected to have any major impact.
Share the employment section. They, oh, sorry. They did, uh, say that this store, they will employ thirty-five employees, I believe fifteen full, twenty part. Anything else you can think of that was stated?
Uh, they are expecting daily deliveries. Uh, he, unfortunately, Mr. Tygen isn't here. He was given a lot of really crazy stats about this and QuickTrips as a whole. I mean, within twenty-four hours, the milk is taken from the cow, processed and sold in the store. Uh, they have over, was it eight-hundred million donuts a year?
I think it was, what, three million donuts a week, I think.
Yeah, something just absolutely crazy.
It's good to know, you know, because the donut flow is, you know.
Critical.
Yeah, well, for law enforcement in particular. So, twenty-four hours a day, you know.
Well, and I, I do wanna say, though, I think as positive as a job impact is that it's gonna have for new jobs and everything here, I think there's gonna be some negative impacts to other businesses that will bear the brunt of a bit.
We hear already, you know.
Yep.
There, you know, I, I don't know what else to say, but, you know, you know, they'll be okay, but it's, they're gonna feel it.
Yeah.
You're right. Um, I, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the QuickTrip development proposal.
I'll second it.
A motion by Van, second by Travis, to, oops, sorry.
Just one point of clarification. Was that with the conditions and modifications recommended?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. With the conditions and modifications recommended.
So, a motion by Van, second by Travis, to approve the QuickTrip development proposal with the modifications and, um, sorry.
Recommendations.
Recommendations. Any questions or comments?
The what?
Can we ask a question? Just curious that about the role, role in...
Can we ask a question? Can we ask a question? Just curious about the role of Ridge Road itself. That's my road. I travel every day out of the winter. Are there any reinforcements to that road?
No, it's a different...
It's a different Ridge Road.
They call Ridge Road up by the memory care unit too. That's Ridge Road too.
Oh, good, good, good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eventually, that's all going to be re-adjusted.
Yeah, so if you look on the screen here, Ridge Road that you're talking about is this portion, let's see, right over in this area here, that's the existing Ridge Road. This is the new Ridge Road.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Eventually, they may connect. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. When they build that Ridge Road, are, is QuickTrip going to build the road or does the town have to build that road in there if it meets your standards?
The road is already installed.
It's there.
It's there?
Yep.
And it's a four-rod road? And blacktop? Are they going to blacktop at all or...
Yeah, it's designed and built for the weight of this development and future. Any future developments, we may have to go in discussion about who builds the road. But this one's existing already.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. Next item, ordinance 1901, to amend the code of the Village of Osceola, Chapter A, 221, charter ordinance and Chapter 40, officers and employees. And this is in regards to, we had a previous discussion about this, correct?
Yes.
Yep. And this is separating or having the ability to separate the clerk and treasurer position because currently it's worded that they have to be the same.
Correct.
I'll let you expand on that.
Oh, no. Well stated. All this does is give the opportunity for this board to appoint a clerk and a treasurer or a clerk-treasurer combined. Right now, we can only do a combined and as previously stated, it's, times have changed. The original intent is no longer here.
Yep.
I'll just say from a procedural standpoint, any of these ordinances, once, if they are recommended and they are approved, they then go into public hearing, they'll get posted and then they can, they can be reviewed for 30 days. If they're not contested by process, then they become live.
Okay. I'll make a motion then to adopt ordinance 1901.
Second?
By Tim, second by Deb, to adopt ordinance 1901. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Next item, ordinance 1902, to adopt the comprehensive plan of the Village of Osceola, Wisconsin.
In front of you is the recommended ordinance. It's a model off of the previously adopted ordinance in our comprehensive plan. And then behind that's a resolution, a planning commission resolution that was approved. Per state requirements, we're required to update our comprehensive plan every 10 years. The state is pretty loose about whether or not it's a full-blown update or redraw, or if it's just revisions and corrections. In this case, the village is required to do theirs in 2019. Normally, we'd like to do a full-blown update, but given the 2020 census, planning commission recommended that we only look at removing any of the implementation items that were completed and then, in its simplest, nurse this along for a couple of years. Additionally, with a lack of staff, it was improper for us to try to muscle this through the wrong way. So what we are requesting here is an ordinance to approve the comprehensive plan as stated in the implementation section and then looking for, within what should be a couple of years, when census is completed, we'll do a full-blown redo of it and really turn it into a strategic implementation plan instead of just a document that collects dust.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it. Who wants to second? Van?
Sorry, Bob.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Van, to adopt the comprehensive plan of the Village of Osceola, ordinance 1902. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. Next item, resolution 1912, creation of a complete count committee for the upcoming 2020 U.S. Census.
It's like I have to speak a lot today. I'm sorry for the board people and all the board people in the audience too. Census is coming and we just talked about it. It was recommended to us and actually part of the procedures of being a village that we adopt a temporary committee, if you want to call it, or a complete counts committee. The village is committed, whether we like to or not, to make sure the census is done as efficiently and as high quality as possible. And it really behooves us to do it right because the better the counts we have, the more assets we can look at and the more funding that's available to us. So the resolution in front of you is basically going to be do a few things. It'll appoint the village president and the village administrators, the lead liaisons, and then develop a complete counts committee that will help to steer the guidance of our outreach efforts toward our community. I will, can state that the main focus of that group is to educate, engage, encourage the community through local outreach. And we'll state, I drafted this up, but it was taken word for word from the recommendation from our U.S. Census liaisons.
And it's important, you know, that we do have accurate counting and, you know, as it says here, just for future planning and funding. So we'll have to, you know, if anyone could think of people that would like to be on this?
How many people are on these usually?
It didn't decide. From experience, the first time I did this in 10, when I was on a committee, four to six is great. More than that and it just gets clunky. I would recommend representatives from places where residents are hiding. So our senior center or organizations like schools where residents and people hunker down for the winter, where you can really capture those individuals to help. And then maybe groups through senior living facilities or apartment complexes where you can get voices into areas where residents don't traditionally participate.
How many meetings would this likely encompass?
Shouldn't be more than a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pass this resolution 1912 for the complete counts committee.
I'll second. Motion by Bruce, seconded by Tim, to approve resolution 1912, create a complete count committee. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. Next item, applications for license and permits. First one's going to be a Class B beer and Class C wine license for Cascade Bar and Grill, 110 North, Cascade Street. And Ericksons are both here, correct? You guys want to come on up?
Okay. Before the Erickson's speak, I'll just say that this was a repeat of the one that was thought to be on the agenda the previous month. It wasn't put on the agenda because of some errors and issues. Coincidentally enough, staff put it in a side pile and I wasn't aware of those issues until now. So we're working through those and here we go. Up to Ericksons to take the lead.
How you doing tonight, everybody?
Good.
Yeah, we just, you know, we want to open up this business and just run a nice clean business, family-friendly and become a part of the community and make it a fun, safe place for everybody to enjoy and have good food. We got copies of the menus there if you'd like to see them at all. Send those up. And I've been in the food business for 29 years. The last 19 out in Stillwater at Petey Pappy's and my son...
13.
13 years.
Stayed in Stillwater.
And...
Also at Petey Pappy's?
Petey Pappy's, yes.
Cosi's Tavern and Grill, Lake Elmo, Woody's Bar and Grill in Bayport.
Okay.
Yes. We plan on incorporating a 10% discount for military, police, fire and veterans on food and...
And EMTs.
EMTs.
Res responders.
We just want the opportunity to open this place up and run a successful business that everybody here in the village can be proud of and enjoy.
Who is...
Carolyn.
Carolins are the, what do they call it? Because we're not Wisconsin residents.
She's our agent.
Agent. She's our agent.
Okay. Does she, does she work there at the restaurant as well then or...
Yeah, she'll be working there as well. I've worked with her at Petey Pappy's for the last 19 years.
Okay. Okay. And I'm just going to start off with, so this is, you'd filled out a couple of these, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the issue?
There were some back taxes on the building and water bills.
Yep.
And that, Tom, the owner, took care of those. I believe they're currently up to date now.
Okay.
And then the other issue was on the application, there was a criminal background check and we had a little confusion on that. I thought, I thought they only went back 10 years and that kind of thing, which was my fault for not consulting with the city on that. Because we had somebody help us fill it out that owns a bar over in Cambridge and my last defense was like 2003. And I asked her about it and she said, I think they only go back 10 years. So we obviously screwed that up. I wasn't trying to hide nothing because I knew they were going to run a background check anyways. We were well aware of that. So those were the two issues and that we had.
Our municipal code requires that the premises have a clear record when it comes to assessments, taxes, back, everything. So while this is a rental property, the building owner had excessive water bills and multiple years of taxes that were still out there. We did confirm that all of those have been paid off, which we're very happy for. The second piece, as the Ericksons alluded to in your senior report, is the original application failed to acknowledge past history and prior issues. You know, it was caught immediately by our police chief during the review of it and their initial applications were denied because of that. They were then told to refill out the applications. It was rereviewed and then because of some of those issues, it brought serious concerns from village staff about, you know, the validity of this. Given the character and the history of the building, we thought it was important to thoroughly vet this process and review it and then get you all of the information to make the decision that you saw fit. So at this point in time, the applications that they resubmitted were accurate by all accounts or by review and the building is in good standing, but there was still some of those concerns that were out there.
It says nothing to do with your application, but you are aware of like the history with the building?
Yes, I am. I am very aware of it. We want to change that image. That's our goal.
Okay.
The good thing is back in the day, it did have a good image.
I heard that too. It's been there a long time. It's got a long history and we're well aware of what happened. We want to run a clean business.
Clean, honest, family-friendly business and good environment for people to come in, you know, watch sports, you know.
We just want the opportunity to do it. That's what we're asking for.
In this, well, is, are you still going to be Petey Pappy's aunt here?
Nope. This is 100% committed to this.
You guys are going into competition?
In fact, he's going, he's going, well, they're across the river. He's going to live upstairs. There's an apartment upstairs. He's going to live upstairs and I'm going to keep my house and commute.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the beer and wine license for the new Cascade.
I'll second that.
Who was the second? Motion by Deb, seconded by Bruce, to approve the Class B and Class C wine license for Cascade Bar and Grill. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, what's the procedure for reevaluation of these if anything happens? You know, if there are any violations of any of it?
Yeah, they have to be in good standing. It's an annual permit, so every year you guys will get the renewal of these. Usually, I think those are in June, if I'm not mistaken. So if the applicants are in good standing and the building's in good standing, then it would come up to you guys.
Okay. Just curious.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Anything else from you guys? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. So we have passed five to nays. Passed five to two.
Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. You guys want to keep the copies of the menus or more than walking to the...
Take them with you.
You need to see this copy of my certificate for the bartender thing because it says on the operator license thing back here.
You got it, Chris.
Proof of schooling.
Yep, yep. We'll need a copy of that downstairs.
Downstairs, okay.
Email it, drop it off, everything.
Okay.
Tomorrow. Yeah, I won't be up there for a bit. So, yeah. Nothing else for you tonight?
Wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item, beverage server operator license. Looks like we have one, two, three, four, five. Can we take them individually or as a group? All recommended.
I'd suggest doing them all as a group since I think they all look pretty clean. So I'll make a motion to approve the beverage server operator licenses as a group.
I'll second. Motion by Deb, seconded by Tim, to approve all of the operator license as a group. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. So I know we've questioned some of the other operator license approval in the past for some of the convictions that people have had in their records. I don't like going against Ron's recommendations, but I think we approve ones that are, that are worse at times. So that's, I just struggle with that sometimes with the ones we have to approve.
Yeah.
Do you have an issue with any of these specific?
Nope.
No?
Either specific people are you referring to?
Yeah. No?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Cigarette license, Cascade Bar and Grill. That would run till June as well.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Bruce, to approve the cigarette license for Cascade Bar and Grill. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. Special event permits. Can we do these as a group or do we have to do these individually?
I, you can certainly do them as a group. I don't think there's an issue. The only thing I want to say is that these are three pretty standard events. Don that goes happened multiple times. The Christmas market with tippy canoes, it's something a little bit newer and they, you'll notice in your packet that they want to do a sleigh ride if weather permits from their location to the other location, to Mill Pond area. Staff did review all of these and I do want to note that the considerations from our public work staff or police or any of the other review people are in here. As a Blake in common, it's really, really important for anybody applying for these to get them to us early. Some of these are last minute to you guys that didn't... Some of these are last minute to you guys, that didn't get us enough time to, um, review these the way we would like to normally. If it's a new event or something like that, we might just say, sorry, you guys didn't get it on time. Uh, these are a little bit different. The other thing I wanna note is that, um, while we don't currently now, you'll see how, um, I requested staff start to put in projected time that it costs to be a part of these. Um, it's more so for our internal planning, but also to note that there is staff time that go to these that we don't currently recoup from events, so, uh, by any means saying we have to recoup it, but just be mindful, uh, of staff time to do these.
So, and you said you wanted to do a sleigh, a sleigh ride?
Yeah, yeah, a wheeled cart.
Okay.
We wouldn't allow metal sleighs on our roadways.
No, I, I didn't think that.
So, my, my question on the, is, on the sleigh ride, um, when I look at this map, who, I mean, I look at this and I think coming down eighth and making that turn onto Summit is not a joy in a vehicle. And with this, what they're asking for, and then you go down the hill by the fairgrounds, that's, that's-
Scary.
Yes, I, I think that that would be one thing I would really seriously consider looking at, and one of my suggestions would be, I don't know how wide the vehicle is, but the possibility of asking the school if there's a way to come through down the walkway by the elementary school and by the gate, you know, open the gates and stuff and consider that because it removes what I think is a, this is, i- if there's any snow on that day, uh, that, this is, I mean, I, this is not a fun hill. I would consider thinking of that, cause this just doesn't, this is not a-
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing.
Super safe route.
I think I'm safe to say the school would be willing to open the gate.
Yeah, and then, I mean, depending upon how big the cart is and everything to be able to come around and down.
Come down Chieftain?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then they could just come down Chieftain and it would take them right to, um, you know, they could come all the way down Chieftain, right to the park.
Yep.
There any need for traffic control or any notification that sleighs are gonna be running around in the streets? I mean, I know they used to do it on River Street, maybe they still do.
Yeah.
Um, run that traffic.
Oh, Bruce can be out there helping them.
Yeah, cause we have so much traffic there.
They have a hayride out of there too downtown, don't they usually do that?
They could have a vehicle towing a, a sleigh or a wagon or what?
Their intent is a horse-drawn cart.
Oh geez, no.
There's no horses coming down.
Oh god, no.
That, that, that hill.
Yeah.
So, what, yeah, what you guys could do is, um, maybe because of this, vote them separately and then make the recommendation that the route be changed to-
Yeah, let's do them separately.
Go away from that intersection or that hill.
Yeah.
A- and, and then we can work with, uh, the individual and they can work with the school district, uh-
Yeah.
To fine tune it.
Okay, alright, we'll do them individually then.
So, first one's Dough on the Go.
I will make a motion to approve Dough on the Go.
I'll second that.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Bruce to approve the special event permit for Dough on the Go. Any, uh, sorry, yeah, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Uh, alright, so then Tippy Canoes Christmas Market.
So, I will make that motion to approve it with the consideration for changing the route.
I'll second that.
One comment I do have just before we go to the vote, um, you said it's a horse-drawn carriage?
Believe that's their intent.
And they'll be in charge of any cleanup with that?
Absolutely.
I see Todd laughing.
Plow should be able to take here.
We'll have Todd right behind it with a, a little doggy bag.
Yeah.
Alright, so, I'm sorry, motion by Deb and seconded by, was it Travis?
Van is Van.
Van, sorry. Motion by Deb, seconded by Van to approve, uh, with few changes to the route, um, the Tippy Canoes Christmas Market special event permit.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments by anyone else?
I will just say that these guys have, um, the Tippy Canoe thing, they're really making a huge effort to try to connect the other end of town, and their idea for this is actually really adds to that and is actually pretty cool. If they can do, you know, Christmas markets, Chris Kindles they're called, are like be- becoming one of the more popular little events and stuff where they have little booths and stuff, and this, this could be a good draw to add to the lineup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, in the afternoon, we're gonna have stuff going from Tippy's downtown and then in the evening, we're gonna have stuff going from downtown out?
They kind of-
Get a new perspective?
Yeah, yeah, so they kind of overlap in time and everything, but I think Tippy's is-
Just teasing, yeah.
Got a, got a year end of the town in the-
Yeah.
Alright.
Southerners who got all the action.
Have them contact me for the school.
Got it.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. And last, uh, Light Up Osceola.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Bruce to approve the special event permit for Light Up Osceola. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Next item, conditional obstruction permits. There's one for coming home. And it looks like she wants to have the easel, bike, bench, and a planter. Photos attached. Think this is what she's had pretty much for a while now.
I know that these fall kind of under the historic preservation and the historic downtown and the downtown and everything, um, but it, is there a way we can put a little more teeth at some point into all of this? Because, um, I, I feel like downtown, we get a whole lot more of the, um, you know, do it first, ask for forgiveness afterwards. And, you know, I go back to the welcome bucket and I think that it would be nice if we had some sort of welcome bucket for new businesses in town that had kind of a, uh, plain language, as they, the term is now, of our ordinances and everything that impact them, so that we don't end up with, um, you know, Todd having to go down there and say, you can't have this item or as much as you'd like, you, this, you know, whatever's flashing this and everything, this is what it is and this is why. And I would think that the involvement from the chamber would be crucial to this because the Historic Preservation Commission was actually created out of the main street. Back when I first started everything with the village, I, the first thing I ever was on was on the Historic Preservation Commission and we worked on trying to get a lot of these things in place and it was led by the Chamber of Commerce at that time. It's just, to me, it's one of the things, you know, I don't wanna be the evil sign people or the, you can't do this and everything, but I know in conversations with Todd and, you know, other public safety things, that some of this is safety issues, not, you know, we don't wanna, I don't wanna be the people that are denying something nice for a business that draws business in because that's the last thing we want, but we also, I think, need to make sure things we have in place are being enforced or at least acknowledged, so.
Something like a new business checklist, maybe with like-
And back, way back, gosh, ten, twelve years ago, um, that was something we started when Renee Rogers was the head of the chamber and, uh, we had tried to start get something in place along that line. It just, I think it would benefit everybody from having something where here we are in November, getting a thing to approve something that usually is supposed to be approved on our same timeline of, for July first.
And this has come up the past, I don't know, three or four months? It's just issues and-
Past three or four years.
Yeah. I, kinda what Deb was saying, like not being the anti-sign people or anything like that, but it is kinda like, you hate, have to always do it after the fact.
Well, we don't wanna deny them after the fact.
Right.
Yeah. You know?
Yeah.
But then also, where is the enforcement with it? Do we have any enforcement with it? Does that fall upon?
Yeah, we, we do enforce these. As a good example, Public Works and myself walked down the road and we, we worked with business owners to say, okay, remove these flags, they're too low, and move this stuff. It really falls down to public safety and Public Works to do the enforcement.
And it would be nice though to have that ahead of time so that you don't have to walk down the street and be like, naughty, 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 you know?
Yeah, and, and I've talked a couple of times at chamber, board type things and everything too. They have a retail group that I thought it would be a great fit to have the conversation in there with them and then, I don't know if I, you know, something to be informative to business owners, even those who have been around for a lot of years, to just kind of, kinda read, let them know kinda what and why.
Nothing to bring up at our joint meeting.
That's-
Yeah, yeah, and it, and it goes along with that same, you know, and the, working together, us and the chamber and the downtown and everything.
That's probably something we wanna bring up at that joint meeting coming up.
Yeah. It's a great idea.
Isn't that something?
I think I just heard it.
There's an echo in here, yeah.
It's okay, Van, you can take it again.
I'm sorry.
I can't believe I did that.
Everybody just wanna-
I know.
I think in regards to these obstruction permits, we had talked in previous meetings about having Public Works review them before they come to us. Is that where we're at on this? Is this, is that what's happening right now? Or is this just coming to us without a recommendation or not?
Well, I think just coming to us, correct? We're still not receiving, no, no.
Right.
Okay.
Who does receive them right now?
Our-
The village office?
Normally it would be the clerk, yeah, so it's our admin office that gets them.
Okay, so maybe we just need to-
We'll pass it on.
Todd, is that something you would like to review ahead of this?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Just, just saying this now, it's, it's one of those, I can tell you right off the top of my head, that's something we will be, you know, we provide a great service in, in removing that snow, anything, we're doing two inches downtown. That's one of the things that we will be getting out every twenty feet and moving out of, out of the path so we can perform service for the business.
You know, and I don't know if this is the place to discuss it right now, but is that something that should be considered in the winter, these things get off the streets?
Parking regulations.
So, they don't need to go around them all?
Yep.
You know, maybe a, a board could be just put out and then moved, you know, I don't know.
Well, and I, and I think that would be something, you know, like I said, we have, um, there's a historic preservation kind of ordinances that are in place that a lot of this falls under. It's the same with, you know, working with the downtown businesses with making sure that, you know, color schemes, blah, 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 everything fit into kind of the historic nature of downtown, and I think we probably are doing for kind of a, a review of those so that, you know, we're aware of what's in there and making them aware and then making additions or different things like that, that, you know, could be, you know, update, updates to it.
Well, it's something for a future meeting.
Yeah, I think signage and stuff like that should get reviewed.
We'll get something up for you guys.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. All right, so as far as this condition year's permit.
Staked its compliance, so I mean, it's not breaking any rules, right?
As far as we know, it's compliant, but do we know what, I mean?
It's too many different than the other ones we've approved.
Right, exactly, so I think that we, you know, I mean, I don't wanna hold this against Jane for her being the one that brought it in right now, but I would say that by, you know, hopefully by next, start of the next fiscal year, July first or whatever, however we work that, that, you know.
I would say this winter, it's something we need to address and create.
By next spring?
Yeah, yep.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional obstruction permit.
I'll second that.
Motion by Van, seconded by Bruce to approve the conditional obstruction permit for coming home. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Alright, Board Committee, Commission, and Agency Reports, we have three, one from the Plan Commission on October first, uh, two thousand and nineteen, one from the Ossow Library Board, September twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, and one from the Airport Commission, September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen.
Just to type, one, the Plan Commission, I'm spelling of O'Connell, and the, uh, approval of agenda. Capital C.
Oh, I see it, thank you.
Any questions or comments on any of those?
Just that signage was brought up at the Plan Commission too, for us to review in light of QuickTrip and a few other things, but they wanted us to take a look at it just to make sure that our intent is there, that's all.
And that'll be reflected on the following. These were the approved minutes from the previous meeting. We will be reviewing how signage works for our intent for look of the community.
Alright. Alright, next item, financial update.
Okay, well, in an effort just to try to get you a little bit more, I thought it'd be important to at least show you where our funds balance are. What you see in front of you is a worksheet of each one of the accounts that we have. And then at the bottom end is the cash balance, so currently right now, we have cash available of four hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and change. That'll go up and down when revenues come in, taxes go out, things like that. I would be cautious when you're looking at the individual lines, as some are negative, some are positives. Normally by this time of the year, they should all be positive, but because the last line item here, number seven thirty, is so large, as I mentioned before, the journal entries to adjust all of our revenues haven't gone into these bucket areas, so that's why they're not in the best shape right now.
And I understand that, uh, it might be helpful when we look at this, if we knew what these various funds were. I mean, I know the numbers are different, but one hundred is general fund and-
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll continue to try to get a, a better report as we learn a little bit more about how workhorse actually works.
Says we're making, well, at least we have money, that's good.
That was ten twenty-five.
Hey.
Couple of weeks.
Close enough. Okay.
Um, approval of vouchers payable?
I don't know why they're not in front of you. So, I, I guess at this point, I would recommend you not approving those.
Okay.
It's, it's more of a, a rubber stamp on them, but I, I don't know why they're not in the packet.
Okay.
Just flip to it right now. So, I guess I would recommend waiving that one for now.
On those. Alright, uh, discussion of an action on any other appropriate items? Bob?
Yep.
Travis? Van?
Oh.
Um, I would just like to say how, I know you guys had to stay tonight, but do you like having it at the beginning versus-
Agree.
Okay? Board, would you be good with that?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Makes a lot of sense.
I almost felt like we were at the end, but we were at the beginning.
Yeah.
Alright, Deb?
Yep.
Chris?
Yep.
Tim?
Good.
Alright, and with that, we will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-two PM. Thank you all for coming.